I will open our school committee meeting for May 15. If we could stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You will start with an introduction of members.
Tenovio Millville.
Kerry Godet Blackstone.
Dan Keith Blackstone.
Matt Catalano Millville.
Chuck Dunton Blackstone.
Tara Scobie Blackstone.
Erin Pinaco Millville.
Denise Carrier, Director of Finance and Operations.
Jill Pillo Gellerani, Director of Learning Support Services.
Jason DeFalcos Superintendent.
Thank you so much. And we do have a very short time right now to get our meeting wrapped up within an hour, and then we'll be joining a joint meeting with Millville to discuss some water. So we'll move right to our student rep.
Hello, how are you guys?
So much for joining us.
Alrighty, so BMR Junior Senior Prom was April 28th. It was a success, we thank all that came. BMR Jazz Ensemble recently performed at the Hatch Shell in Boston. BMR Marching Man performed, be our guest, in Disney's Magic Kingdom on Main Street on Wednesday, April 19th. Last Friday, we had advisory where ADL students presented to sophomores. The high school finished two weeks of AP exams and testing. Great job to all students who have worked hard for AP credit. And woo, thank goodness those are over, let me tell you.
It is a big relief when those are over.
Sophomores have math MCAS testing tomorrow and Wednesday, good luck to sophomores. NHS just had a recent induction of members. And new officers held their first meeting Wednesday, May 10th. Senior send-off meeting is planned for Wednesday, the 24th, where we will say goodbye to our seniors. BMR is celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week at the high school. Last week, we had National Honor Society write letters to each teacher and members of our staff to thank their efforts at BMR. Seniors' last day is May 26th. Seniors are taking part in community service at the Boys and Girls Club for their last week of school. Boys and girls have their DVC track meet this Wednesday at 2:30, so good luck to them. Tennis also has a meet on Wednesday that starts at 3:30. Basketball has a game at 7:00, and softball had a game today at, oh, sorry, Monday, the 22nd, at 3:30. So that's everything that's going on with the high school. New sports, new band performances, events. It's crazy how the year's coming to an end.
Drama Club, too, had their performance.
Oh, yes, Drama Club.
We would have been meeting last Thursday, so maybe your notes were...
Pretty sure it was Friday and Saturday, right?
You actually...
Good for them.
We have this freaky Friday, wasn't it?
Do we know if they had a good turnout?
Yeah, it did.
Good. Do you know how many new members were inducted to NHS? It's not a trick question, just curious.
Oh, no. I think it was about 18, maybe like two juniors and 15 or 16 sophomores. The officers, Andrew Goethe was president, Haley Conant became vice president. I took secretary. Aubrey Renucci is Service Hour Coordinator, and Taylor Perry is treasurer.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And then Student Council is planning on electing new officers. We're having elections Friday, this Friday morning at our meeting, and then next Friday, I'm pretty sure we're announcing.
Very good. Busy for everyone. Any questions for our student rep?
That was excellent report.
Thank you, Ashley. It was just like a lot from last Thursday.
A whole lot of information, yeah.
Hope everyone got it all.
So our next meeting is May 25th.
Alright.
If you can put that on your calendar.
Perfect.
And you're a junior.
I am a junior.
So we'll need a new student rep to join her.
Yes.
Unfortunately, I guess. Alright, well, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, guys.
See you in a few weeks.
Thank you.
Yeah, good to see you, too. Have a good night.
You, too. Alright, so moving on, we have consent to Agenda A warrants and minutes of meeting for April 27th. I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Kerry, second by Dan. Any discussion or questions on those? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. We have public forum. Moving on to school committee items. We're striking the graduation requests from the class of 23. And moving on to our school committee calendar that we talked about for the upcoming year, which would start with the August 28th. We talked at our last meeting about moving that meeting to August 28th. I think Chuck was checking his calendar to see if that Monday was going to work. And were there any other dates that needed adjusting for our members? So do we want to move August from the 10th to the 28th? I think the 10th was a conflict for several people, so I think we're going to end up moving that no matter what, depending on, I mean, we can put it on for the 28th, and if it doesn't, you know, work out, we can find another date within that week.
Is that for the 28th?
28th, okay. So I'm looking for a motion to approve this calendar as posted with the adjustment to August 28th.
Motion.
Motion made by Tara.
Second.
And second by Dan. Any other discussion or requests for dates? All those in favor of approving the calendar as presented with the August 28th date? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, thank you. Next, under School Committee, we were talking about our subcommittees. So what we had listed and what was shared in a Google Doc, just so we could all see the descriptions, was the Finance Subcommittee, Capital Planning Subcommittee, which is already a working Subcommittee, but obviously, anyone that wants to join in can definitely do so, Negotiations, Superintendent Evaluation, Policy, and SIC Bank. So all those descriptions were sent to everyone. And we, looks like we have a few spots left. Actually, I think Negotiations would probably be more than three people anyway. I don't know, we listed it as three people per Subcommittee. Some of them, we don't need that many, others, we need a few more. But right now, what we, what I have in front of me, what everyone signed up for, for Finance, I have Kerry and Tara, I think it's Tara Larkin? Did you put the question mark?
So I reached out to her and just told her to put her initial.
Oh, okay.
So I think that one is Tara Larkin.
But did you put the question mark?
No, she put the question mark.
Oh, okay.
Yep, she put it.
Alright. She's questioning herself. Maybe that was a typo. So we, I think we would definitely still be looking for more participation in Finance. So right now, like I said, Kerry and Tara. I actually kept my name off the list just so the third line didn't get filled in, because I will do as many of, I will attend as many as I can and need to for all of these. Capital Planning, Kerry and Tara, already very active. But again, like I said, anyone that wants to join into that, especially with the new high school, the new school building and the feasibility study coming up.
You could put me on that list.
More is better, perfect. Negotiations, Matt and Ted signed up. That's amazing. Still need a few more people. Like I said, more is better for that. It's not less is more, it's more is better. Policy, Matt, Tara, and myself. Superintendent Evaluation is me, but if anyone wants to join me, I think it would be good for someone to sit and, you know, watch the whole process through a year's time. A little more on that, I, last year, we did do a training with an outside, someone that used to be a member, and she's just very well-versed in it, so I do think I'll have her come back again to do that. I think a refresher is always good, so we know that we're doing the right thing for Jason, and that Jason's doing the right thing for us. So more to come with that, stay tuned. And then SIC Bank, Kerry, Ted, and Tara, I don't know that you need all, but I think what will be good about that is having the flexibility, if one can't make it, it's usually good to have at least two here, and that's usually only 15 minutes before a meeting, So like I said, definitely looking for more participation on negotiations, and that would be time to be determined. Finance/ Budget, again, definitely need more participation there.
You can put me on Finance.
Thank you, Dan.
I wasn't sure when I was supposed to chime in, so.
Any others that you'd like to be?
You said you're short on negotiations?
The negotiations, yes.
One of these, I hate to ask this at this point, but are these during the day or at night? In the evening?
They're always at night.
Yeah, during the day.
There was one time we started...
You're telling me not to do it?
No, we don't, alright, we do it during the day.
Then we try, we did try like a Saturday workshop once. It was right before COVID. I'm gonna say it actually was very productive, but then we got shut down, so. But typically, it is in the evening after the school day, so.
You can put me on.
You still have the descriptions in your email?
You can, oh, yeah. Feel free to text me, too, as I'm not always up to date on my emails.
Negotiations?
Yeah, you can put me on there, too.
Alright, so that's where we stand with that. I don't think, that was just basically an update. It's a good starting point for now. There have been times when we've had others when we need them, so if you feel there's something needed, don't be afraid to bring it up, and we can work in a group for that, too. So if we could get our website updated with...
Yes, with the groups.
Since 2008.
We have the new, we posted the Subcommittee.
Okay, so now we can just attach names on...
We just didn't have the names because we weren't sure yet. Yeah, we can definitely put those in.
I also plan on doing negotiations, but I just gotta leave that.
And do each of the Subcommittee's need a chair?
And that can be decided when they, when they meet. So we do already have a Policy meeting on the books for Friday, because there is a pressing matter, so I think we can do that at each meeting.
Yeah.
As needed. And then what would happen is the Chair of that Subcommittee could report back during one of our meetings to all eight of us. Any other questions about that process, or? Alright, so moving on to report with the Superintendent.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Just a brief agenda for me this evening. The first item is around school safety. We're gonna do a quick update. Quite a bit has been done since our last, our last conversation around school safety. I'm actually gonna ask Denise to share, just a very brief overview on a new app that we are digging into called Rave, that will help us with our communication.
So this app works based on your cellphone number. People can join either by downloading the app or just by adding their phone number. It allows announcements to be shared freely within a geographic footprint, meaning we are geo, they fence the area, so anybody in the area would be getting alerts that has entered and opted in. The opt-in is only going to be through a phone number list that we would put there, so no one else would be able to opt in except the people that we are allowing, and...
Which is just staff, right?
Which is just staff, yes. And from there, we, it allows a lot of communications and functions where if something was to happen in the building, we could also use this to keep people updated, as opposed to sending out an email. We could just send it through the app, because everybody has their, their phone on them, and it allows direct communication with the, the safety community, fire, emergency, police, and, and also, the vendor of this is in direct communications. So it's a really good opportunity for us to be able to kind of keep everybody informed in the event of an emergency, and also to get first responders quickly involved. So it has some really great functions. I think it's gonna be great for us to be, and right now, we're in the evaluation process, so we're meeting with some schools that are currently using it. We've met with the vendor a couple of times, and trying to determine the practicality and make sure it's gonna meet all of our needs. Questions?
Denise, would this like, say there's a class outside in Phys Ed, that staff member would get an alert that something was happening?
They would get an alert.
Other side of the building.
And what happens when they get that alert, it will tell them what's going on, and alerts come right through the app, so there isn't any sound that's attached. The first alert has a sound, and after that, the app actually shuts the sounds off on your phones. So you won't be getting any alerts, and you won't be putting yourself in any hazardous way for communicating through the mechanisms that are built in, so.
And is there, the app is also wired to our first responders?
Yes, yes.
Right? So they get the messages?
Yeah, they get, they get all the messages, and they can respond whether, what they need to be. It allows also communications that if there's a medical emergency in the high school, just the high school members would be in that area to get the notification that a student has had been injured, and then, then so they would know to expect some first responders to avoid a hallway or something, so. So it has a lot of things just out beyond just the, the major types of things, just for daily communications that could really help the schools to be more successful.
I can also build a school committee group, so you don't have to keep checking your emails all day to see if I sent something, it'll just, if there's, you know, for instance, last week, we had an issue with the high school. I could send that through this push notification, and it will just come up. That will help you not have to check multiple things during the day to keep a pulse on what's happening.
Would it work if it's just what Kerry mentioned, an outside teacher, but what if it's a substitute? Like, will they be moved in?
Yes, so this, the way the system works is it would essentially communicate with, with our Aspen system, so all of our staff have their cellphone numbers in there, and it would link right to, including our substitutes, it would link right to Aspen. And if a staff member does not want to put the app on their phone, some people don't want to do that for various reasons, as long as we have their number in our system, it will push the notification out to their phone anyhow. So, so I know people get worried about that for various reasons, but they'd still get the, they'd still get the communication.
In a text format, maybe? Is that...
They just wouldn't be able to respond back. They would only be notified incoming.
So a staff that doesn't have it wouldn't be able to report an issue?
Right.
Correct. But they would get the notification if something was going on. It's right now being used predominantly, as Denise mentioned, in schools, municipalities, higher education. And the geo-fence piece is really nice, because it, it's hard, it would be hard to, it would be impossible to make an error with it. If I'm at home and I accidentally hit something, or it's not gonna send anything, I have to be in my geo-fence area for it to work.
There are a lot of safeties that are built into it, but I just wanted to give a brief overview, but I can get in more detail when we have more time.
We're going to start it with test school, or are we going to go full district?
I, my sense is we would just roll it out district-wide, seeing that it is just a communication device, I think, you know, I think we'd be okay to not have to pilot that first. It's fairly proven at this point, and Denise said you've been checking in with different...
I've been checking and communicating with some other schools and seeing it, and also reaching out to the end-users, which would be the teachers, along with EMS in those areas that are involved with using it, and it's all been very positive. I haven't received, haven't received any negatives.
Some of those other schools, how often do they find they're using it?
Well, more frequently than you would think, because, you know, you have medical emergencies that typically, the nurse might send out a notification or something, but this doesn't, this kind of takes care of that, so you don't have to. And a lot of teachers are not necessarily sitting at their computers to watch for these types of things, so to have it on their phone as an alert is, is easier and it's a more effective way of communicating with them.
Have any schools made it a requirement for each staff member to have it? I guess is my question.
I don't know that we can, that would be contractual with...
Their, their personal cell phones.
Are they finding that most are doing it, though? Majority?
I think most people appreciate the level of safety that it offers, and yes.
There's always a few.
I know, I'm thinking about the ones that don't.
Like, what, what would be a hypothetical reason why someone wouldn't want it on their phone?
Yeah.
They wouldn't want the app.
They wouldn't want, yeah.
They may be concerned that the app is monitoring their phone use.
Personal information.
It's their personal phone, they could have access to their personal information, that kind of thing. So, you know, my sense is there might be some people concerned about that, but we just want to make sure we can get the message out to people if there's something wrong.
Is there a cost associated with it?
There is. I believe it's $15,000 for a three-year contract, Denise, so do I have that correct?
Yeah, you can mind them without exact.
It's about $5,000.
Are there similar products out there?
There are other products, yeah.
Competition?
Yes, yeah.
Similarly priced?
I don't know about the pricing, we only requested the pricing on this, just because it came, it came really highly regarded from our police officers. So we went with their suggestion. They were at a couple of trainings, the Blackstone Police were at a couple of trainings, and it was highly regarded and urged that their school district looks at this model, so we went with the one they recommended.
Before you roll it out, are you feeling out to see how many are willing to use it?
Sure, yeah. We haven't had those discussions yet. This is our first kind of public conversation about it, but we will be having the discussions with, I mean, at this point, we've only discussed with the leadership team. We haven't had discussions with the school staff yet, but we certainly will.
And the annual cost is $5,400.
So is there like a test period?
There, there really isn't, I mean, it's an app, and I think it's something that you could roll out rather simply. It's a, a set of time is one day between extracting the data from our system and then getting all of it all set up, and setting up the user groups and the teams within the buildings and within it, within all of them that we would want to have, because teachers would be in one, administrators would be in another, and even just, just for the nursing staff, they would also be able to have some different circles. So setting up all those circles of communication to make sure the right people are receiving notification, and also researching to make sure the right people are in those communication groups, that might take, you know, a little bit more discussion. But yeah, setup is, is like a four-hour period to have it up and running.
Well, I'm just wondering, like, is there a 30-day period to get it out?
If we don't like it.
You know, like a money-back guarantee, right?
Or is it just, it's a three-year lock-in?
It isn't a three-year, we can do a one-year. We can do a one-year. The, the price differential's a little bit more attractive to, you know, to do a three-year So, but we can, based on everybody's comfort, if that's what everyone would prefer. I mean, you, you tell me, when we, when we get to that point, we'll figure out what works best.
So is this something you wanted to move forward with today, or you just wanted to introduce?
No, 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 we're just, we're still in the research. We just wanted to put that out there, so that, you know, we're researching other mechanisms besides all the facilities, adjustments that we're making to the buildings and the infrastructure. We're also doing things for communication, so we're not just doing one avenue of protection and communication for the students.
I personally would like to know if there's some type of, you know, money-back guarantee period.
I, I will get that information for you. That's why we're doing our due diligence and meeting with people that are using it in application, so that we would limit our dissatisfaction by asking enough people and learning and talking to them.
Any other questions about...
So if this is a discussion item tonight, will this come back to us for approval?
Of course.
Okay.
We didn't want that to be the first.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I...
We want to pay for it.
Yeah. We just want the first time it saw us to be when we asked for it.
Yes.
I was asking the question so everybody would know that, that's all.
So I guess the question tonight is, with this introduction, is there anything specific that you'd want to know about it?
Do the police have the same app on their phone? Will they be carrying this app?
It's essentially anchored to their, like, their dispatcher.
They get, they have a desktop model of it, also?
Okay. It goes directly to dispatch, or, because I know some communities use like a regional 911, I don't believe we do, but...
Whoever is in charge of receiving that incoming notification would be who would, my senses would be who would have the desktop set up.
So in Blackstone, that is in Blackstone, but Millville uses a regional dispatch?
They'd have to make a decision.
Yeah.
The chief would, if he wanted that information, or if he wanted a dispatch. So they'd have to make a decision on that, on that end.
Is this like a, a single person sends the message, or, let's say, you know, I have the first classroom and I see something go on, is that, is that...
So a single person sends the message, they hold the panic button, they have to hold it for a certain amount of time. Once that message goes out, everybody that has it gets notified, and then they will all be in the loop, so it opens up a communication screen, so it doesn't have the panic button as an option right away. It'd have, it would be just the communications about that, so they could reply that if something they had seen, they could add, enter their input at that point in time.
So there's one initial communication to the first responders, and then from there, anybody can enter in any information in terms of what they're seeing, hearing, where somebody is, that kind of thing, so you can, you can get an ongoing kind of narrative of what's happening, and everybody can weigh in on that.
Without going over a PA system and announcing to everyone?
Including the intruder, if that's what it is, or keeping privacy if it's a medical issue. It sounds like the right use of technology. I'm definitely interested in hearing more about it. Any other questions about... So we'll wait to see that back?
Yes. Thank you. And then, along the same lines, we completed our safety drills at all four schools, and we did have an opportunity to walk through various scenarios in each one of our buildings with our local law enforcement. We also had our first responders, other first responders present, fire, EMS, and administration. We did a few different things. In all of the scenarios, we had the principal and assistant, if there's an assistant in that building, and myself. In the location of the intruder in the building, and that's how it was framed, just an intruder, in Millville, we referred to the person as a stranger, so we were really cautious about the words we used. That was important for us, because it gave us an opportunity to see in real time how our staff and students were responding to the different scenarios that were happening throughout each of the buildings. In the midst of that, we had Jill, our SROs, we had other staff that were actually out, Scott, that were actually out in the buildings, and they were watching and supervising to see, you know, given the information that was being provided to the students and staff, how were they actually responding? So, you know, essentially, what it allowed for was a kind of a multitude of perspectives in each scenario. We were able to check doors, making sure they were locked, we were able to see the barricading, what that looked like, who was able to safely evacuate, based on the information being given. When the drill was over, we then kind of huddled up in the main office and waited for classrooms to call us down, and we all split up, myself, Jill, the principal, Scott, our SROs, we all went to different classrooms where the staff wanted some additional support, addressing some of the questions and concerns that the students had. And that process worked very well in all four buildings. And lastly, we then, before we wrapped up the, the drill in its totality, we huddled up and debriefed. Here's what we saw, here's what we heard, this is what we learned from the students, this is the feedback they gave, these are the questions they had, here are the gaps we have, here are the strengths we have, and we left each school with essentially a small set of next steps. Principals then met and debriefed with their staff as well. They did that very, in various ways. In the upper grades, the secondary schools, they did more of like a running Google document kind of thing, where the principal took all the feedback and put together a Google document. And the younger grades, the elementary schools, they wanted to meet together to really, you know, kind of talk through, just the age and stage of the kids is different. And as you can imagine, when you're, when you're working with younger students, it, it really is on the adult in that space to make the right decision. When you have the older students, it was very collaborative, the kids were talking through what the adults had want to do. And the debriefs also were very helpful, because you could hear firsthand from the students and the staff, like, this was the conversation I had that led to these decisions, whether they were, you know, good or bad, you know, but this is the why behind why we did what we did. So what we determined at the end of this was that we will back this timeline up, we'll do... up, we'll do a tabletop drill, which is essentially just going over a scenario and the students and staff talking through it in their room and just, you know, troubleshooting basically. And then we will look to do a drill in the winter and a drill in the spring. Many of the students, anecdotal, uh, many of the students afterwards, when we debriefed with them directly, we asked, like, how many of you were really nervous, anxious before doing this? Again, middle, high school, uh, middle and, uh, the elementary school students, a lot of kids had their hands up. We asked how they felt afterwards. Many of them said much better, this makes sense, I'm glad we did this. There were a few that, that were still nervous, that were still anxious. Um, so we spent a little more time with those students that needed that. But I'm really grateful to our parents because, uh, we didn't have anybody dismissed before our drills. So if you remember last year at the high school, we had, um, about a half dozen students, I think, dismissed that did not want their children participating. We didn't have any of that, uh, all the way down to MES. That's, that's, that's great. I think it's important because that gave students an opportunity to really, you know, kind of talk things through and get a sense of what that, uh, drill feels like. And again, you know, we took an approach of, we're looking at this as critical thinking. We want people to be able to think, uh, because in these situations, it's flight, fight or freeze. And we don't want people freezing. We want them to be able to, to think. So we really took the time to process that with this, with the staff afterwards. Um, and I can't say enough about how appreciative I am to Officer Nimsick and Officer Gould, our SROs. They were deeply involved in all of this, um, made themselves available to staff, to students they circulated to and debriefed with the kids in the class. Uh, we really took our lead from our law enforcement, which we should. That's their lane, uh, their expertise. Um, and they also seemed very pleased with how, um, the drills worked. So we are not happy that we have to do them, but we're happy that we did them and that we got a, a good outcome from it.
Any questions for Jason on the drills?
And then the last item for my, uh, for my, uh, report is just an update on FY24. As you are aware, the town of Millville passed our budget a week ago, today, actually. So a big thank you to the town of Millville for passing our budget and all of our warrant articles also passed. So we're very pleased, uh, about that. And we have our meeting, uh, with the town of Blackstone, or they have their meeting, I should say, uh, on Tuesday, May 30th. So we're very much looking forward to the Blackstone Annual Town Meeting. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Moving on to Report of the Business Office.
Um, in your packet, and I think Denise will start taking these over at the.
Yes.
At the end of the fiscal year here, but, um, in your packet, you do have an updated expenditure report. And you will notice the budget balance reflected on page two. If you look at the, uh, last row, that is, it says type, expense oh five. If you look all over to, to the end, second column to the right, budget balance, it says, um, you will see where we are at this point. That does reflect, um, our social studies curriculum, I believe. Is that right?
Half of it.
Half of it, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, it only reflects half. The other half, uh, bigger, that is on Monday.
Very good.
I mean, not Monday, Friday after this was printed.
But we do not have the reimbursement for technology yet.
That is correct.
And what is that amount again?
Two fifty, 250,000.
So.
They did, uh, just last week, reached back out to verify our unique, uh, unique identity number, which we verified again.
Again.
I'm going to get a job for sam.gov at some point to help with this process. This is, took ridiculously long. But they did, um, reach back out to verify. We are in process.
All right. And just to back up just a little bit with something Jason just mentioned, Millville did pass all of our warrant articles, including the, um, approval of the stabilization account for, so if, you know, what, once we get through Blackstone, we will be able to make that transfer of the, um, 500,000 if it is approved in Blackstone. So these numbers will all fall into place if that happens. Cause essentially we should add 250 to that number. Any questions on the expenditure?
And at our meeting on May 25th, the Small Capital Planning, um, group that Scott is, uh, heading up with Denise, will have a list of some potential recommendations. Um, and the committee can decide at that point if, if you want to move forward with some of those or if you want to hold them for now. But we'll have those at our next, um, at our next meeting.
Moving right along. Moving right along to facilities. What do you think? Oh, that's for filing.
Received and placed on file.
Received and filed.
All right, so, um, Premier Seo Coating reached out to me. They wanted to get started on the 16th. However, our last tennis match is around the 24th. So we're gonna put, postpone it till the 24th so we can get all our games in. And Premier Seo Coating is good with that. Millville Elementary School, we're looking to replace the, um, following up kind of what Jason said about the small capital planning, one of the things we're looking at is replacing the AC unit at the, uh, central office, nurse's office at Millville Elementary. The unit that's there now is original. It runs on pneumatics and it's getting sporadic, works when it wants to work. So if there's a possibility of replacing that, we'd like to do that. Uh, JFK Industrial Burner came out and they recommend doing repairs to that pipe that was leaking in the boiler room, um, during the summer maintenance of the boilers, because they have to drain down the system. And it's just, uh, labor intensified. There's no materials involved. Um, let's see, middle school, we're also looking at possibly replacing the old split units on their walls. From day one, there was a Ben, uh, problem with leaking. The pumps aren't strong enough to pump the water from the AC units out of the building. So it drips and causes, uh, mildew or copper's getting soaked. And out of the six of them, two of them are only actually cooling. So being 20 years old now, it's kind of hard to get parts to replace them. So again, part of the capital planning is we've got, you know, some funds, we'd like to do that. We're also looking at possibly converting the parking light, parking lot lights to LED lights. That'll be a cost savings on our electricity. And at that time, we'd like to repair the string of lights that don't work coming up the road to your right when you pull in. That's a pinched wire under the ground, we believe, and they haven't worked for like the last eight years. So possibly one solution would be converting the LEDs. It's not going to require the voltage that these lights require. So we could possibly jump off the light post over in the corner there and run down to that set of lights without having to dig up the driveway. Otherwise, we'd have to dig up across the front parking lot from the light that's located next to the crosswalk. So we'd have to go all the way across the front parking lot, across the road to the next light. That's where the wire is currently. So that's why we never did it, because we'd have to dig up the parking lot roadway. So that's, uh, Craig Caspian's gonna look into that. We did have a representative come out and, um, look at all the lighting. He's gonna get us a quote. Uh, and we did mulching at the courtyard at BMR, got it ready for family fun day and graduation day. Planted mulch, flowers. Good to go. That is all I have.
Sorry, on the side of it.
Except for now, all the powders fall in and, you know, we gotta get some rain. That was it. Any questions?
Thank you so much for your update.
You're welcome.
And use of facilities requests?
Yes, we have one from French River. Uh, they teach this course, or they teach a course, uh, every summer. And they, they use the, uh, actually use this space. That, um, Millville had, we had got their request late for the, um, town meeting. So that is in here as well. We have the Blackstone Town Meeting request in here also. And so we have those three requests.
Um, so just one question on the French River. It says no charge. I thought if it wasn't something, if they're receiving a fee and if it's not for our students to do, so we.
Yeah, we do, we do charge them. It may have been a, um, cause she said no charge and then if yes, which group? And they clicked, they checked group one. So I think it was just an error on the form there. Should be yes, they will be charged.
And there's a custodian, so they're paying?
Yes.
Any other questions on the use of facilities? I think we're still missing one. May not have been filled out yet. But we can, we can approve them in the rear also. Millville, not meeting here. All right, so, um, looking for a motion to approve the use of facilities as presented?
Motion.
Motion made by Chuck.
Second.
Second by Dan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That's unanimous, thank you. All right, moving on to school committee forum. Someone must have something. Well, I'll say that attending family fun day was, it seemed like a very nice turnout. I was here a little bit later. I don't know if anyone was here when it first started, but, um, Mike Soder attended and posted a nice.
Yeah, he did.
Word on that. And, um, definitely looked like all the groups that put out, you know, had a lot of participation from the families that attended. So that's a ni, that's a nice time. Thank you for doing that. So another successful event. Anything else for committee forum?
Like all the things that were coming on. Ashley touched on all of them at the high school.
And as quick as we needed her to. All right, so moving on, just our upcoming meetings, we have, um, a joint meeting at 7:00 PM this evening with the Millville Board of Selectmen and some water representatives. Um, I believe some, Mike Soder's joining us for that as well.
Yes.
And our next, our, our next posted meeting will be May 25th at 6:00 PM here. Thursday, June 8th, 6:00 PM here. Before that though, we do have senior week. Everyone received their invitation in the mail for the awards night and graduation. Um, and Blackstone Town Meeting is, as Jason already mentioned, um, Thursday, the Tuesday, Thursday, the Tuesday after Memorial Day at the high school auditorium. Millville representatives can attend and cheer them on. We sit in the back. Um, and I think that's it. If anyone else has anything? All right, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn this meeting and we will reopen a 7:00 PM meeting, uh, with the town of Millville.
Zoom.
Okay, motion made by Dan, is there a second? Second by Ted. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.